This conference will now be recorded.
I'll go ahead and put the agenda up. And did you want to still do the, um, do you want to go over the agenda and do roll call on everything, Dinah?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, just one moment and I'll bring that up real quick.
Okay. Okay, I think I can get online now.
Okay. Oh, you're not online. If not, I can have if Paul or Stephanie or my stuff, I don't know. Paul or Stephanie would like to do it, that would be fine.
No, I can, uh, let me see if I can get on here real quick. Oh, I can see, okay. I got eyes. All right, sorry, everybody. Um, I got stuck in traffic and so, um, long story short, I'm joining my phone tonight. I did see the agenda there for a minute.
Can't, that's, that's not very big though, right?
No, it's bit, planning big enough. If you close the tool, the toolbar on the left side, should be fine. Where it says all tools, just hit that little X next to it. Where you see where it says export a PDF, right above it, kind of to the right, there's an X. Okay. Okay. All right, so, um, we'll start by calling the meeting to order at 5:33 PM as a Lassiter Planning Commission. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance, please. My pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Paul Jones.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Stephanie Clark.
Here.
Planning Chairperson. Planning Commissioner Chairperson Dinah McLean.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, um, first we have approval of the meeting minutes. And, um, I did want to say in the meeting minutes that I received, I didn't see any kinds of comments or anything. Did anybody else have a chance to review the Planning Commission meeting minutes? Sorry. Otherwise, if not, um, we can go ahead and move that to next month's agenda.
I quickly glanced at it, but I didn't notice anything out of order, so I would move to approve the minutes from last month.
Um, Stephanie, did, have you had a chance to review them?
Yeah.
Because, like I said, I.
Yep, I'm fine. Yes, I have had a moment to review them, review minutes and approve.
Okay, so did you both see comments in there from last meeting?
I did not see the comments though, but I know some were made, but.
We do have the meeting minutes on there under 2.4.1.
It's probably the, the audio of it.
Yes.
So it's not, nothing's written out, but it's just.
It's all the audio because that was the presentation and, yeah, we had the presentation. It's part of the minute items for the planning, yeah.
So they're probably there just by way of clicking the link.
They are, yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry. Oh, wait, no, I clicked the link and I see September 10th. I see the ones from September 10th.
So do you see the video and the agenda has all of the presentation? What, um, I guess I'm confused as to what is needed other than that?
Um, in the previous, previous meeting minutes, we did have comments from people, so I didn't see that in this month. In the one from, the meeting minutes from September 10th, I saw comments from people. In the one from October 8th, I did not see comments from people, so that was my only concern.
Right, I, I don't believe that we had any public comments last, in October.
Yeah, we had, no, we didn't, but we had information from like the Planning Commissioners Discussion and stuff, and I didn't see it in there, so. Um, not sure that we need them since we have a link to the recording. Um, my only concern was that, um, you know, we had discussed like having another meeting and, and that didn't occur. And then we had discussed, you know, several things about the, um, the, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The, uh, hold on, I'll get it.
About, was it the presentation that you had questions regarding, um, we did, about the voting on the different items, is that?
Yeah, and the, the, the part where we had to choose whether we wanted to do an average of the, um, trees that, oh. I'm losing my head today. One of the presentation was on the like.
Are you talking about site potential tree height and, uh, selecting the riparian buffers?
Yes, that's it. And so I think that information was missed and the emails went out asking us to vote on that. And so that was one of my concerns, but.
Yeah, we weren't asking for a formal vote, but just direction from the Planning Commission. So it's just general guidance on a policy direction, but it's not a formal action. So we were just asking general feedback of what direction to go on that. And the consensus was, um, from the comments that we did receive was to average that buffer across the city.
Okay, and then, but I heard that in the email that went out asking the Commissioners to vote on that, which A, I also thought that we were going to have a separate meeting to enable more discussion and understanding about it. And B, that one of the Commissioners' comments were not in that email is one of the options? So, um, I guess that's where I'm coming from, is my concern around that.
That may have been a misunderstanding, um, but again, we're not asking for formal votes at this time because that would require formal action. And we're not quote unquote adopting these documents yet, but we're just getting policy direction from the Planning Commission. Um, and again, we can't request formal votes through an email as well, has to be done at a meeting with a hearing. Um, and again, that's not what we're doing this time, we're just requesting, um, just general policy direction and implementation guidance.
Okay, all right, so I guess in that sense, as a word for that, um, the meeting minutes, I guess I'd be okay approving them the way they are?
Thank you.
We're still going through, this is firing out how we're gonna work on Planning Commission interactions with everybody, so, um, uh, I guess if, who was it, Paul, you were going to?
I, I made the motion, I think Stephanie also, she didn't make a formal second, but.
Oh, sorry, second motion to approve, thank you.
All in favor of approving the, um, Planning Commission meeting minutes from October 8th?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? An aye, aye here for, uh, I'm voting for, to approve them. And then any abstaining, abstaining votes? None made, so the motion carries to approve meeting minutes from, um, Tuesday, October 8th. Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you, Dinah.
All right, um, then next we have, um, public comment. I see we've got caller one on the line and a few people in the room. Do you have any public comments from anybody in the room first?
Anybody have public comment? Alan?
Okay.
We also, so for Planning Commission, it's very informal. We just asked you to come up here and speak into one of the microphones if you would like to test.
It's been a long time, so I'm, you know, I'm just here to observe.
Oh, right, well, we welcome you here to observe.
Yes, and then, um, we have caller number one, any comments from you? Are they unmuted, do you know, looks like?
I, I, are you on twice because it shows up like you?
Oh, yes, I might be, because I'm on the computer, I'm on my handphone. Um, all right, uh, sorry.
That's okay, but I think we have a third, oh, no, that's okay, we're all good.
All right, please, bring up the meeting minutes. Or the agenda, um, all right, so next on the agenda is our comprehensive plan update.
Was there any public hearings? There's nothing, is there?
There's no public hearings and we're closing public comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dinah, and thank you, Planning Commission. Thanks for having me again tonight on the comprehensive plan update. Um, just carrying forward from our last discussion in October on the environment module of the comprehensive plan update process. Um, and again, we're currently in a full swing of the comprehensive plan update. And I know we've had some new Planning Commission members join us since we've been carrying forward this update process. So, um, it's gonna be a bit of a learning curve and, um, just refining, retuning, um, this process with you all. So I'm happy to work with you all to make this as easy as possible, but it's also a very heavy uplift for us all. There's a lot of work that goes into this at the staff level, Planning Commission level, city level, and with our community members. So, um, thanks again for bearing with us this process. We're getting, we're getting, um, head into, um, the, the process, um, and, um, we're getting stuff done. So that's, it's been good progress so far. So, again, we're reviewing the environment module of the update, which is the environment and climate resiliency elements and the critical areas ordinance update. So Angie, go to the next slide, um, yes.
Can I have you explain when, how this is one module of?
Oh, yes.
Can you explain that? Yes, um, there were some questions regarding that, so I just thought that maybe if you could explain that a little bit.
Yeah, I, to answer Angie's question, so we have the comprehensive plan update and we have modules, we call. So, um, a couple, uh, Commissioners aren't here, like Commissioner Clark and the Commissioner Chair weren't here for the land use and housing element module. And that was the biggest uplift in first module for the comprehensive plan update. So we took the overall plan update into specific modules with like-minded ideas. So we did land use and housing, since those are closely lumped together. And then the second module here is the environment module, which is the environment, climate resiliency and critical areas ordinance, since those are like-minded. And then the next element, which I'll discuss briefly tonight, our next module are the minor elements. Um, these are really small elements of the comprehensive plan, they're like three to four pages. And, um, there's not really a lot of GMA requirements that go into it, but they're supporting elements for the rest. So that's another module. And then we have our fourth module, which is the capital facilities and utilities, such as transportation, um, utilities, um, and parks. And so that's our final module, so we have four modules. So we're in our second module of the four modules that we're doing for this update process, if that makes sense.
Clarification, so I know in the past we, were we reviewing something else? Because I know we looked at something on the parks and open spaces plan already. I mean, sent in my tenure here, which isn't long, but was that not the comprehensive plan parks?
No, the, that parks plan is a separate facility plan, but it's used to frame the elements. Yes, for the comprehensive plan, so it's a back, it's a background document essentially that we'll be using to update the element. So a lot of it will be used to frame it, um, so you'll get to see pieces of that again. And why we did that process for this, so, yeah, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions there? Yeah, no, that's a good question. Um, I like, I've been throwing that term out there and realized, um, we haven't touched that term in a while, so, thank you, Angie. Um, so if go to the next slide, or actually back to the last slide, sorry. Um, again, this is just a look at the second draft of the environment and climate resiliency elements. And the draft critical areas ordinance with, which is chapter 18, 300 in the city's code. Um, I'll go over next steps after looking at the updates we made to the second draft. And then I'll leave time after the presentation for questions and comments, the Planning Commission, and further discussion. So I'm asking to hold any comments or questions until I complete my presentation. Um, hoping to be pretty brief tonight on that. Um, and then the overall goal of our night is to make a motion to move these drafts to City Council for review. I'd like to reiterate, this is not for formal adoption, um, just to move these drafts forward and recommend to move forward for City Council to review. So I'll touch base on that when we get there. Uh, next slide, please, uh, thank you, Angie. Um, since, since last day, last meeting, um, the Planning Commission reviewed the first draft of the environment and climate resiliency elements and the critical areas ordinance. We discussed with comments and further policy direction. Um, and then we followed with a 14-day comment period for Planning Commission to review the, that first draft of those elements and the critical areas ordinance. And then staff, after receiving all those comments from the last meeting in that 14-day comment period, took those Planning Commission comments and integrated those into the second draft we're looking at tonight. And then we also provided a cheat sheet for Planning Commission to target those areas we've updated for the second draft, just to help assist your review, since these are pretty big documents. Um, so we wanted to stream that better for you, we'll be carrying that forward.
So did we get that cheat sheet, is that what we got in our attachment?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
That was received, yep. Next slide, please. Um, so going into what we've done, um, the first is the environment update, environment element, um, the second draft. This was pretty minor compared to the other element, the climate resiliency element in the CAO. The, we just did some fine tuning of language to be consistent with the other elements of the comprehensive plan. Um, for example, if you see there, like, "Lassiter shall consider," it would say "will consider," or there's just like inconsistent language used throughout. So we just went through and, um, refined accordingly. And then those squares there are, um, the goal subject areas for the environment element. Again, very minor changes were made since the first draft, so, um, again, just looking, um, to see if there's any other, any other items we may be missing when you guys reviewed. And then, next slide, please. Um, so this is the climate resiliency element. If you took a look, we updated the cover photo of this element. It's not this photo here, um, it's a really nice aerial view of the, the roundabout in the center. Um, so that's a nice addition of the update, but also we included a vulnerability and risk assessment summary. Um, this was completed late last month. Um, and essentially this is analyzing, um, specific assets in the center, um, which are major roadways, which that's Lassiter Road. There's a lot of echo. Lassiter Road, Pacific Highway and Forest Street, um, so those are the roadways we, what were analyzed in this assessment. The East Fork Lewis River Bridge and the city's wastewater treatment plant. Essentially, these assets were analyzed for, uh, vulnerability and risk from climate-related impacts. And specifically, um, increased stormwater events from heavy rains and, um, other storms. And then essentially what this found was that the major roadways had the highest vulnerability to extreme precipitation and storms. Um, and medium risk for exposure, uh, from high storms, such as, um, there's a lot of rainfall, um, that just deteriorates roads and creates potholes and so forth. Um, and then the bridge actually had low vulnerability and risk, just because the bridge is set high above the river, so it's out of the floodplain. Um, but there could be minor blockages from water just pooling on the bridge. And then the wastewater treatment plant had medium sensitivity to extreme precipitation events, but it's been designed where it can accommodate increased stormwater from, um, outfall from the stormwater system. Um, so essentially we took this assessment and just reviewed the climate policies to see if those are adequate enough to ensure these assets are prepared for climate, um, impacts. And you'll see on the next slide here, uh, we did generate a specific policy in the climate resiliency element, um, specific to the bridge. Um, so that Lassiter shall ensure regular inspections of all bridges in the city to proactively maintain the structural integrity of bridges to climate hazards. Um, specifically related to increased stormwater events, which can cause mudslides, um, and flooding. Um, and then just to touch base again, all those squares there are the, the goal subject areas, um, in the climate resiliency element. And we touch base on those again on the, in the first draft. So these are all required by the state, so there's a lot of policy and goals in this element, and it basically comes straight from the state. But there's some fine tuning, making it specific to Lassiter. Next slide, please. So going to the critical areas ordinance update, um, this was a policy direction made by the Planning Commission. Um, we had a discussion about regulating wellheads, and this was including group A and/or B wells. And we ultimately decided at the meeting last month to not regulate group B wells. So it shows, it shows here we struck through that text, that we'd only regulate group A wells, which includes like that map there. It's a huge, um, wellhead protection area for a Clark Public Utilities well, um, that's used to water the pub, or for the public water system. Next slide. This item has to do with anadromous fish, so that's essentially salmon. And we added specific requirements, um, for anadromous fish and, uh, fish and wildlife habitat protection areas. Essentially, all new structures and land alterations shall be prohibited from habitat that supports anadromous fish, except if developments follow specific provisions. And those specific provisions include working, um, if there's any in-water work that has to be done during a certain time of the year where it's not impacting salmon run and salmon habitat. Um, and also the work that might be occurring in the habitat has to be designed to minimize impacts to any downstream functions for salmon and fisheries. And then, um, we also added specific critical area report requirements for anadromous fish, including monitoring, um, detailed description of impacts and conservation and protection measures. And this is, uh, guidance provided by WDFW on protecting anadromous fish. As, as we know, there's a lot of work being done to recover their populations here in, um, Washington State, including southwest Washington. Next slide, please. So we already touched base on this a little bit, um, but this was another Planning Commission direction we got was on the average riparian buffer implementation across the city. Um, so using that site potential tree height, um, we provided three different options for the city to regulate these. And we, um, decided to, um, average that buffer across the whole city, just because that buffer can vary from 100 feet to over 225 feet, depending on soil type. And there's a lot of soil types in the center, so it's really, really messy to implement. So if you average those numbers together across the city, you get up to 195 feet. So that would cause a, uh, a decrease in buffer width for, um, larger streams like the East Fork Lewis River and Breezy Creek. But actually increase that buffer width for smaller streams, typically tributaries to Breezy Creek or East Fork Lewis River, East Fork Lewis River. But I like to reiterate, this doesn't take away the exceptional use criteria that we discussed last month about, um, if a buffer takes over someone's property and limits their economic use of the, and economic right of the property, they can still apply for that criteria and still develop as they need, seem fit, as soon, as long as they fit to that criteria. And also there's variance criteria built in as well, in case that's needed.
And what was that called again?
Sorry, what was that, Dinah?
What was that called again, that, um, exceptions?
Exceptional use criteria?
Okay, so like, that's saying if someone has like a three acre property and the buffer is 195 feet, that they can, um, use a exceptional use criteria to overcome that?
Yes, that's one mechanism that they potentially could qualify for, um, as long as they were meeting those criteria as outlined in our code. And then there's, there's occurrences where there may be development on a site, um, and it's called functional isolation. And essentially, um, with functional isolation, uh, the buffer hits a roadway and it's only 100 feet from the stream, but you need to go 95 feet. Well, there's no function after that of protecting any habitat because a road goes through it. So you, the buffer stops at the road and doesn't go that 95 feet, so there's that built in in the code as well. So to answer your question, Dinah?
Uh, it does, and I'm, uh, trying to figure out what to do next, because the Commissioner that had a question about that is not here today, so, um. So, uh, if an email could be sent maybe to Commissioner Smith to explain that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and we, we explained that in the last meeting and we gave him opportunity to review the code and we didn't receive any comment from him as well. Um, but, and he's also not here, um, however, it, it would be good to have his input, um, however, we're trying to move this forward. Maybe we'll revisit that after I complete my presentation, if that's okay, Dinah?
Yeah, that's fine, I'll let you.
Okay.
Ask my questions.
Yeah, I'm almost done, so, um, next slide, please, Angie. Um, so this is the last item on the critical areas ordinance update, this is geo hazards. These are your erosion hazard areas, landslide hazard areas, and seismic hazard areas. Um, we added specific requirements, or not requirements, we added sources to map, um, geologically hazardous areas in the center. Um, and those include Clark County maps online and the Washington Geological Survey. Um, the map to the right is from Clark County Maps Online, and those are the mapped erosion hazard areas in the center.
So, so the brown areas are?
All the brown areas.
Erosion hazard areas.
They're mapped, doesn't mean they're there, but they're indicators that they're there. So typically when an applicant comes in for review, um, like for pre-application, we see the brown. And we say, you should do a geotechnical report to verify, A, if that erosion hazard area is there, and B, if so, there's an outline of criteria that they have to meet to mitigate for any impacts. Um, we also added a permit exemption criteria for erosion hazard areas. Essentially, if they have an erosion hazard area and no other, um, geologic hazard area in that site, um, as long as they're implementing stormwater best management practices, BNP's, per the stormwater section of the code, they are exempt from critical areas permitting, um, and that's per.
Exempt from the what?
Exempt from critical areas permitting, um, and that's per best available science. And so we implemented that just to streamline permitting in the city. And then we added citing and buffering criteria for fault ruptured hazard areas. Um, we only have one fault through the city and it barely touches the city, but it's enough to have that. And essentially, um, it's saying critical facilities have to be buffered within 100 feet away from a fault. And critical facilities are schools, daycares, clinics, hospitals, so forth. Um, and then lastly, we added critical area report requirements specific to geo hazards. Because each critical area, the five that we have, had specific requirements for critical area reports, but geo hazards did not, so we just made it consistent with the other critical areas.
Out of curiosity, where is that fault?
Um, it kind of, it's almost parallel to the East Fork Lewis River. It's not shown here, it kind of, it's like, starts on the north side of the river and goes northwest, kind of along the river. And goes north uh west, kind of along the river. So bisects like the, there's that little elbow, um, so there's the bridge and if you go.
Right.
West, there's the little elbow in the river going north, it bisects kind of right through there about like four properties. And that's about it right now, so if the city expands.
Yeah.
It could potentially um be in within more of the city, but. Um, it's a few properties, but enough to have these regulations in place. Next slide, Angie. Um, so here's the last slide, um, so tonight we uh. I'm sorry, um, if a motion is made to move forward the drafts tonight, these drafts will go to the council. In December for a draft review with the city council. Um, again, after city council, they won't be making adoption, formal adoption of this, these elements. Um, we're going through all the drafts and then holding them for a big adoption package um for mid to late next year. Um, because we're required to update and adopt by December of next year uh per state requirements. So again, they'll just be holding um that draft after review with any comments until adoption next year. And then um, next month, we're planning on bringing the first draft of the minor elements. Um, and so the minor elements are economic development, urban growth and annexation, government and historic and archaeological preservation. Again, most of these are four to five pages, so they're pretty small. And it's going to be a little reprieve from the rest of the update process, so it's going to be nice to have something lighter for the holidays. Um, so we'll include that cheat sheet again um for these items coming next month to help guide your review. And I'll I outline some framing, frame guide work to help guide your review as well, just to streamline the process for us all. Then next slide, Angie. So tonight we uh again reviewed those planning commission directives, so the riparian buffer, the group A wells. And then other comments we received from the planning commission for the second draft. And we reviewed those overall changes in the slides I just presented. Um, and at this point, we're opening up for a planning commission discussion. Um, for additional comments, inputs, suggestions they may see from reviewing. And then um, to make the final uh. Goal tonight is to make a motion and I have draft language on the next slide once we're there to make that motion to city council to move these drafts forward. Um, so that concludes my presentation, so open up to discussion.
I do have a question on the erosion hazard, I'm not sure, obviously, you know, I'm new to the commission. Um, I don't know when that was done, but does that include the major excavation from new construction? So for instance, when you're looking at that plat, I see the plat, obviously, the big one is Stevens Hillside where. There's a ton of huge hills from all that excavation, was that included in that? Observation or is that something that's done, how often is that going to be looked at for erosion hazard as we have more building occurring?
Yeah, it's um, so every time we have an application come in for pre-application, because they are subdivisions in most site plan reviews. They have to come into the city for pre-application and at that time, we review mapping sources. Um, to identify critical areas in the city. And so if a site has a mapped erosion hazard area, we flag that to the developer for the pre-application report. And then we outline the criteria they have to meet, um, including engineering criteria to address that erosion hazard area on the site. So um, I believe Stevens Hills had had erosion hazard areas and they had to implement um some engineering standards to address those concerns on the site. So they're made aware every time they come in for application and um they have to get a critical areas permit and be reviewed under that for that. And so our city engineer is pretty hands-on on that portion.
Thank you.
So my concern with that is that what if it's man-made? Because they went and moved a lot of soil and a lot of it was, I don't know, more than ten feet high, I would say. So it's almost like they're, and it's pretty steep. So what do we, and to me that would be, you know, I'm not a um. Uh, professional at this, but um. How would we prevent people from doing excavations or um building up soil to? That actually creates like a man-made erosion hazard.
Um.
Because this is all based on hazards that are existing, not ones that are man-made. Personally, I should say.
That's a good point, um, and there are some conditions where the mapping does map previously man-made erosion hazard areas. Because they use poor fill or poor construction methods before there was current standards that could cause these. Um, and to answer your question, there are specific standards, I know that like Tony works with that. They have to meet certain criteria when they're bringing in more dirt to fill an area that has to meet geotechnical standards. Um, and then there's a lot of engineering components that I don't understand that much, but um. That they have to comply with to meet um state and federal um engineering requirements to. Cut and fill, especially with steep slopes and those slopes are designed to um prevent um erosion or landslides. Um, so there's specific soils that they have to provide and specific sloping and um other items that have to comply with. I'm also not expert, but I know they do have to go through this process and get engineering approval before they even touch the dirt.
Yeah, but I know, I mean, like, like I said, they, at some points, they brought in so much dirt to raise the houses for review. That, I mean, just looking at it, you can see like some of the dirt had like eroded down and they've done stuff to like cover that up. But I know some cities actually has have stricter laws, like you can't um. Pile dirt ten feet, more than ten feet high to build a house on it kind of thing. Um, I have examples of that, so I was just wondering like how if, you know, to Stephanie's point too, with her concerns. Um, how would we get something that implemented um like that in the city of La Center so that they can't do that again?
Do you know if they received?
And would that be business?
I mean, did they, as part of the subdivision process, they would have had to um get a permit to do something like that? And they would have to do, there's special testing that has to be done when they're building, even as part of engineering. They have to do compaction tests and do different testing and get that approved even when they're building out the subdivision for the infrastructure. So um, I'm just. I I'm, Tony could probably answer this a little bit better because like Alex said, it's an engineering thing. And so if you wanted to add something, um, maybe it would be good to submit something to the city. You know, if if you're, I don't know what you're looking to do exactly, but um we could talk to Tony and see. If there's a different process that you would like to go through. That, not that we would, it would be something that would have to be adopted, not that we could just change it, but um it could be something that could be looked at.
Yeah, no, I guess I'll just try and get that list to you of codes that maybe we need to update. Stephanie, do you have any more comments on that? Commissioner Clark, sorry, I should say.
Um, no, I mean, that was a great follow-up question, I appreciate that and I think you both, you and I both have the same concerns when we look at that neighborhood. And and you can see the hills sliding down behind the brand-new houses.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming though that there's some process, is it in the process of building or that they've been built and now these these hills that are.
So there's just the slopes behind the homes are extremely high and you can see where there's been erosion. I was actually had a lot reserved there and decided no, after visiting and seeing the third time that there was huge crevices and.
Right.
Dirt coming down and then they put tards up and it just, it seems so odd. And I have no doubt that there's somebody there constantly monitoring it, I'm sure, I would hope anyways, that there's constant oversight. This is a building of a huge plat, this, you know, nutrition homes, they're not just trying to, you know, lose millions of dollars. Um, I I tend to be optimistic, but it was just, I was just curious mainly looking at that.
Yeah, and it emphasizes the importance of our critical areas ordinance to protect areas like that, maybe you're indicating might not be enough. But that's why we get a lot of complaints like the critical areas ordinance is too much. But um, there's potential instances showing like we have, these are why we have these permitting requirements for critical areas. Because you can't just build on hillsides.
Right.
Nearly, um, we have certain standards you have to meet too. Um, and so, um, but the specific concern might be a site-specific item and that could be related to engineering stuff and.
Well, we also have to take into consideration, it is still a plat that's being developed. And when they bring in landscaping and roots and things like that, if they do, you know, there's ways to also stabilize that hillside. With the landscaping, then I'm, hopefully they intend to.
Yeah, and with time it'll become more stabilized from my understanding, um, but.
Well, it's not a critical, necessarily a critical area because it's a man-made issue. Because the land used to be slightly sloping and now it's, they definitely brought in like two stories worth of dirt. And then flattened it out to like be able to build these houses with views, essentially, so it's hard to describe. And so I don't know if that would even fall under critical areas, right? Because it's more of an erosion hazard and a landslide hazard, I don't know, that's man-made.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, I think.
That's getting outside of the talk of this meeting, I think, but um.
Yeah.
We should consider that again.
Yeah, I agree and that's something I think we can relate to Tony and maybe a conversation, planning commissioner can help with Tony because he's the engineer, I'm a planner. So I can only say so much.
I, I did have some, uh, Commissioner Clark, did you have any other comments? Because I had some questions too.
No, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, and Commissioner Jones, before I speak, did you have any questions or comments?
But mine are a lot more general and probably, um, and it's more by understanding. Every, everything overall sound good, but I was curious. Um, it, basically the red print is what's new and the others is what was before, but is it significantly? Uh, it it sounded like most of the changes were more by wording or or just a clarification. Is 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 there a lot that's been added that you see overall?
And is this since the first draft?
Yeah.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
Um, we've added some and I outlined them in our presentation, the main components that we made big updates to. Um, were to the critical areas and I outlined those in the presentation. And then um for the climate resiliency element was that vulnerability and risk assessment and a new policy.
Okay.
Um, and so that's, those are the big changes, we made everything else were just minor tweaks, grammar changes, stuff like that, yeah.
Um. And and this is just probably more for my own education in the process of all of us, this is all done. There's so much detail, do we have the resources to monitor or to implement? All of these things that when it says La Center shall, La Center shall do this, La Center shall do this, La Center. I mean, are 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 these things that are typically done anyway, but we're just kind of clarifying it? But it, it just concerned me, it seemed like a long, long list of everything that La Center shall do.
Mm-hmm.
Is this just our normal things of what you do in the planning commission?
Yeah, a lot of.
Not planning commission, planning department.
Planning, a lot of them, especially at the climate side, there is a lot of policies we review together. And over half of them were stuff that we already do as a city. Um, so we consider those and prioritize those first and the other items. Um, we would phrase it as La Center shall consider, so like looking into but not necessarily.
Mandated.
Mandating it, but something we should consider into, um, like for example, for transportation, La Center shall consider. Looking into evacuation routes for emergency management. Um, and that's a phrasing that La Center should look into it and see what's the feasibility of doing that. And then going from the step there to make it a mandatory process or not. Um, so a lot of it was phrased that way, um, but again, a lot of this is coming top-down from the state, but we're still, we're still trying to make it. Um, where it's site-specific to La Center as well.
Right. I I noticed one area where uh you, I know you always change from will to shall, you had one should.
Is there a should?
So I don't know if you.
If you could tell me where that is, that'd be great, so I can catch that.
I I can, I can do it afterwards or.
Sometimes you read stuff so much, you just haven't seen the mistakes, so it's always good to have another eyes.
I I'll I'll tell you after.
I probably saw the S H and I thought it said shall.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
See if there's anything else.
Any other um comments or suggestions or Jones?
No, as far out of my curiosity, why is wetlands always capitalized?
Um, in the, in the code.
Yep.
We, so we capitalize each critical area just to highlight like designated as like a, it's almost like a pronoun as a, as a being. But to point out like these are specific areas in the city that have regulations. And so we're capitalizing to just emphasize that these are a critical area.
Mandatory things.
Yep, so it's the same for wetlands, uh, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, frequently flooded areas and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, so any other comments before I start in? Sorry, so how long, okay, so I know you said let's move forward the draft environmental, environment and climate resiliency elements of the listener comp plan. But how long, there's a lot of red line changes in there that I've been reading through. How long has the planning commission been able to review all the red line changes in those documents, elements?
So we delivered the first draft last month and outlined the state requirements for these updates. And also outlines the changes we made, um, and then we gave planning commission a fourteen-day review period to review that after. Um, and then we provided the second draft a week ago and I provided that cheat sheet of those specific areas we updated. Um, just to streamline review, um, where to look for those in the updates. And so we gave you that week up, up until today to review. And then.
Okay.
And this is the scoping of the whole comp plan up process, so each module is going to kind of work this way. Um, so, but the next one will be in reverse, actually, we'll provide it two weeks before the meeting. So you have two weeks to review the first draft of the next module and you come to the meeting and I'll present. Um, just the overview state requirements and what we're requesting from you all. Um, and then we'll get your comments, revise accordingly for the second draft and provide the second draft a week before this next meeting. Give you a week to review with that cheat sheet again to streamline that review. Come back, take your comments and then the goal is to make a motion to move forward to city council. So that's going to, that's the, the steps throughout this process.
Okay, and once it goes to city council and they look at the draft, do they make a motion to adopt it or where does it go from there?
No, um, I highlighted this earlier in my presentation, but essentially they'll move to. Uh, accept the draft as is, but it'll be held for adoption. So with each module, they'll be held um for adoption of the complete comprehensive plan, the whole draft document at the end of next year. So we'll take their comments, revise accordingly and then we'll go to a planning commission meeting workshop a month prior. And then a planning commission hearing to look at the whole document itself and then we'll go to city council.
Comprehensive.
Yeah, the entire whole document, so every element that we reviewed past a year and a half or so, we'll go to hearing with planning commission. Planning commission will review, take public comments, revise and make a motion to recommend for approval to city council. And the city council will review the whole document, have a city council hearing, take public comments and the same thing and then move to adopt.
Okay, and when it comes back, so you hold it for adoption and then you bring it back, it sounds like to the planning commission. To um get a motion to approve it as is and then move forward to actually adopt it into a comp plan, right?
Yeah, the adoption will occur, the adoption will occur um late next year.
Okay, and then in that adoption document, like there's a lot of red lines in here and a lot of code that's changing. Will we have a chance to review that again and go through like each line and figure out? Because I mean, I read through it, I made comments for a lot of different things in there. Will those still be like redlined the way they are today so that we can come back when it's going for adoption and say, hey, we have questions on this? We want to change this or whatever, or is this our only opportunity to do that?
Um, this is your main time to do that, but um if we get that, if we get that, um. And that's why we request that fourteen-day period so we can get those comments from you, so we can accommodate into the second draft. Um, but um, depending on how much comments you had, we can add those in after this meeting. Um, and you'll see, you'll see the full complete document um before adoption next year. So you will see the red line, the whole, the whole document um at the time next year. Um, so it'd be a lot of red lines to go through, but um, I can take a look. So it'd be a lot of red lines to go through, but, um, I can take a look at your comments after this and see, um, how we can accommodate those. And I, I can also, I have a tracking system, tracking planning commission comments. We had a very few from this last one, so I don't have much to put into it, but, um, I can track those and show how those were addressed.
Okay, cause I didn't get any response to my last comment. And then my other question is, how many people on today's, at today's meeting, the commissioners, actually had a chance to review all the red line comments? And take a look at each of those materials? It's okay to say no?
I, basically I, I looked at it and I read through it until I fell asleep. But it was just today really, so it wasn't really a deep dive into that, um, I have to confess. But I did.
Okay.
Get it, so.
Yeah, I received it in a timely fashion. I think I had plenty of time to review it. But to be honest, new to the commission, I don't even understand necessarily what my commenting should be when I receive something like that, uh, through email. After having the meeting and knowing our next meeting is right ahead of us, I'm not sure what anybody's looking for in between. So I think that that would be helpful for me to get a better understanding of what you guys are looking for, for from me.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Chair, since you two are new to this process and coming in the middle of it, it's a bit of a learning curve. Understanding this, and it's a lot to put in. And I think there's some effort for staff to help you guys get up to speed on, on this process. So we're working on fine tuning and making direction more clear. And I've been trying to do that as we're going through. But also I think it's important to phrase the planning commission, I think just because this is such a huge uplift. And there's a lot of technical jargon and a lot of work in it. WSP was hired as the technical expert on this. But our role is to advise you of the changes we made. And then planning commissions to look at at a high level, maybe there's some gaps from missing. There's maybe some little things we're not contextualizing very well to the center. Cause the planning commission lives here and are planning for the city. So I don't think it's the planning commission's role to necessarily read all the red line. But at least we are highlighting the areas for you to look at and focus that have the biggest implications. And that's where you have to say. So I think that's what we need to communicate as well, because it is a lot to look at. And if you have the time and want to, please go ahead. But our goal is not for you to review it all, it's just there for you as a, a chance to look. And it's also a chance for the public to review as well, since this is on the city's agenda, so.
Okay, so that's kind of my one concern, because being on the plan, having been on the planning commission before, we used to go through like each page of the red line document and say, you know, not necessarily each page, but we'd have the opportunity before the meetings to look at the red line document and then be able to ask questions about different parts of the red line document. I mean, this is city code that's going to impact all of us that live here. And being told that, oh, you don't need to look at it, that's kind of scary to me because that's like saying you can.
We didn't say not to look at it, I said we, we could.
I know, I mean, in general, like, but you don't need to, but.
Yeah.
You see where I'm coming from though, that it would be nice to have the time for the commissioners to actually, because on October 8th, we didn't even get the red line documents. So technically for me, we were sent them five days ago or so. And I was on vacation, to be honest, so I have been looking at it though, um, uh, and come up with some questions on it. And so I don't know if I'm supposed to like ask the questions during this meeting. And like I said, we, we're used to going through the documents and looking line by line of what was red lined to see if there's any issues with what was done. And being able to provide comment versus this general, do you accept what we're trying to do kind of thing? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. And I think, um, I think just the, the scope of this update is different than the previous planning commission's role. There's other opportunities where it's more city led updates, like code, where the planning commission's much more hands on and red line by line items. And like the A D U code, I know the past year or two that was updated, um, and the planning commission was very involved in that. But that was a city led effort. And this is a, um, state mandated effort and it's a huge uplift. And I don't know how to phrase this, but, um, and other jurisdictions as well, they're approaching this where they're bringing it to the city hearing bodies to see the big picture items, have the input where they have it. And these, these are important implications, but, uh, a lot of times the planning commissioners or the city councils just don't have the bandwidth to do all this work and review line by line. That's why, um, the staff or consultants are hired to do this and trusted to make sure this isn't to state code and to city requirements. But they're still getting the guide, the high level guidance from planning commission and city council, just to make sure it's contextualized to the local level. So Dinah, maybe outside of this meeting, we could learn, figure out, um, something to, um, streamline this a little between the planning commission and city staff to figure that out.
Okay, cause I mean, there were some questions like 11.4.1 was removed and it had to deal with the city working with Clark County Emergency Services. And I'm like, well, why was that removed? You know, and questions like that. So I mean, are we just kind of like rubber stamping this and saying this on?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, it was removed to, because it's a, there's like three policies throughout all the policies that kind of said the same thing. And so we're like, that's redundant, so we just took it out. Cause there's another instances, instance of that policy further down the document.
Okay. But you know, and unless we, I had looked at it, we wouldn't know that.
I.
You know, I, I guess I'm just kind of frustrated that we haven't had enough time to look at this and get, you know, an educated answer back. Again, we're just kind of rubber stamping, let's go with this because that's what you came up with. And this is what we as a city, citizens in the city need to live with versus you don't. So we're a little bit more invested or should be invested in it, I think.
I think that it's a hard, it's a hard ask, just because I think that document is like 250 pages to go line by line. You would, it would take a really, really long time. I'm not saying, you know, I understand where Alec is.
No, 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 I'm not saying we should go by line with it, but I'm just saying that we need enough time to make sure the planning commissioners are making an informed decision about it.
Yeah, and that's our goal was with that 14 day comment period to give you time to look and sit with it. And the second, I realized maybe without having that cheat sheet, it was really hard to focus on those specific areas we're looking for you to look at that had, um, bigger stakes and implications across the city. So I did that cheat sheet for the second draft of this. So moving forward.
Yeah, but first, we didn't have any of the red line comments. So I'm treating this as the first draft, because this is the first time I'm seeing anything that had red lines through it. Does that make any sense?
Well, the first draft had red lines. We included, I submitted those to the city and those were provided for that first, uh, meeting last month. Unless there was.
I saw very few in the like code that I saw and the documentation that I saw. So I don't know if I was looking at the wrong thing or didn't come across or what. I mean, it was kind of rushed because it came to us that same day too, so.
Yeah, and we originally scoped, um, to deliver on the first day, these modules, and then give that 14 day period to digest it. After city staff would give a high level presentation on the state requirements and what we did. But moving forward, we're going to give you 14 days before, instead of after the meeting, to review that draft red line just to re-scope per what your direction was from, um, the email you sent in our last meeting.
Okay.
Maybe just.
All right, so I guess my comments, go ahead, anybody else?
So, so our process going forward is very soon after this meeting, you'll send the documents for what we're to review next time. And we'll have the 14 days to comment on it.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll come two days, or two weeks before the December meeting.
So, so two weeks before the December meeting, uh, we will receive it. And then, then we have those two weeks to get it. But that, that, that doesn't give you time to see comments.
Well, it's the first draft, so I'll receive your comments at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll take those comments at the first draft meeting in December from that 14 day comment period. And then I, after the meeting, I'll take those comments, um, address them, update for the second draft and then come back hypothetically in January. Addressing, showing how I addressed those comments with the second draft.
So.
So we're flipping things around a little.
Okay, so, so 14 days before next meeting, we'll get the, the first draft. But we don't send you comments until we, we will do the comments in the meeting in December.
Yes.
And then after that.
Or can we email them, Angie individually to Angie before the meeting if we wanted to?
That works as well. That works as well.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I, I'll send them out to you guys as soon as I get them from Alec. And, um, we'll, I'll go ahead and send them out and then let you guys know. Please, um, let me know what email address, because I feel that sometimes I send it to the city of La Center email and that everybody is maybe looking at it once a month and not all the time. So if you would prefer a different method, let me know. I'm, I'm more than happy to send it anyway that you guys would like it or, um, yeah, we can, we can do something.
Yeah.
Easier for you guys.
And the way that we used to do it was, um, the, the documents would be sent to the city email and then just a quick email to personal email saying, please check your city email address. Cause we just sent out, we just updated the information and sent you an email, so that would be helpful, I think.
Maybe I'll follow up with a text message then and to let you know it's in your city email. And then that might.
Ooh, I like.
That's the easiest way for me.
Okay.
That would be best.
Commissioner Clark, would that work for you as well?
That's fine, or she can use the email she has for me on file, whatever is easy.
Okay. So, and, and you did receive the email then for this meeting today?
I received an email prior to the meeting, yes. Angie confirmed with me about an hour before the meeting started.
Okay. All right, so how comfortable do we feel to go ahead to make a motion and move this forward? As long as we get another chance to see it, you know, red lines next year sometime after, when it's up for formal adoption? And then if we have any questions in the meantime, we can reach out to Angie and get her questions answered? Does that sound like appropriate?
Sounds appropriate. I think we're just kicking the can at this point and we'll have more information at the next meeting, so.
You want to make the motion?
Oh, uh, go ahead, bro.
Okay. So I moved to forward the draft environmental and climate resiliency elements of the La Center Comprehensive Plan and the draft critical areas ordinance to the city council for further review.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, uh, I think I need a roll call, um, to make a motion? Is that correct or not? Since it's just a motion for a draft, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we want a motion for a roll call. A roll call for a motion, sorry, I said that backwards.
What do you want us to say? Commissioner Clark is present?
So, um, all in favor of the motion to move forward the draft environment and climate resiliency elements of the La Center Comprehensive Plan and the draft critical areas ordinance to the city council for further review, say aye and with a roll call. So Angie, can you do the roll call, please?
I did roll call, um, planning commissioner Paul Jones.
I agree, yes.
Planning commissioner Stephanie Clark.
I agree.
Planning commissioner chair Dinah McLean.
I agree. Any abstentions? Any nays? Motion is carried to move forward the draft environment and climate resiliency elements of the La Center comp plan and the draft critical areas ordinance to the city council for further review. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Let's see, I think each of the commissioners, do you have anything you wanted to bring up?
No.
No, I think I'm good now.
Okay, anything else on the agenda? Can you bring the agenda back up, Angie, please?
You did have the draft of the chapter 18.300, was, was that included in this other climate?
Yes, that was included, part of the, that was the critical areas ordinance.
Okay, yep.
Did, do you still want me to bring that up, Dinah? I think that everything has been.
No, we, no, I just asked for alternate commissioner and alternate, alternate comments, even though we don't have an alternate. Next regular agenda and work session and/or work session, um, what is the date for that? And can everybody attend that's on the meeting today?
December 10th. It's on my schedule. That works.
I have it in my calendar.
It works?
Yes.
Okay, so we have three yeses to attend at the next meeting, all right? And then the topics on the next meeting?
So the next meeting, what is the topic?
The next meeting will be on the minor elements of the comprehensive plan update.
Okay, so we don't have any more specifics on that, but okay.
It'll be the first draft of those.
First draft, but you said they're four minor elements?
Yeah, there's four minor elements in that topic and they're, I promise they're smaller than these.
Okay.
It's, will it be all 14?
And we'll get them 14 days beforehand so we can get a better, uh, chance to review. And then comments or questions can be sent to Angie and she'll compile them and send us all an email back hopefully with some information.
14 days ahead is the 26th of November, right before Thanksgiving.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that any possibility to have a little bit sooner, just because so many are, can be gone over Thanksgiving, if it's possible?
I will do my best. This is not the only project I'm working on, so I'm trying to get to work on this, yeah, but I'll do my best.
Okay, and then Angie, you'll send a text to listen when those, um, materials are out there. And if we can each at least give Angie a thumbs up or some kind of reply back that you received the materials, that would be helpful. All right, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Here's your chance.
What's that?
You can move to adjourn.
Oh, I moved to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any abstentions, any nays? No, motion or, meeting is adjourned at 6:30, 8 P M. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Has anybody ever said nay to adjourn?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dinah.